Okay. All right, it is now seven o'clock. It is Thursday, April 11th, 2019. Welcome to the Planning Board. I'll entertain a motion for the agenda.
Will say.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a continued public meeting, site plan administrative review for the municipal water treatment plan, well seventeen A, ninety and ninety-six Tac Factory Pond Drive. And it's being continued?
Motion?
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public meeting for the site plan administrative review for the municipal water treatment plan, well seventeen A, ninety and ninety-six Tac Factory Pond Drive until May ninth, 2019, at nine thirty PM. And to continue the time for action for filing with the Town Clerk until May twenty-fourth, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing done?
They're gonna make May ninth?
I don't know.
No further questions?
We don't get a lot of response back.
You know what I suggested that you do?
We did get a response from the engineer after, but if we do not get an additional response, we will be doing that.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All business, new business, correspondence, et cetera, approve minutes.
Okay. I move to approve the meeting minutes for March fourteenth, 2019, and March twenty-eighth, 2019.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Accounting.
I move to approve the requisition of three hundred and seventy-five dollars to Chester Consulting Services LLC for peer review of thirty-six Barker Road stormwater permit. For ten dollars and ninety-two cents to WB Mason for office supplies, for fifteen dollars to Rockland Trust Company Visa for purchase of ticket to the South Shore Climate Change Symposium for Brad Washburn, for thirty-four dollars to Kyle Ward for parking reimbursement for the Climate Adaptation Forum, for fourteen dollars and fifty cents for the train ticket reimbursement for Brad Washburn's attendance to the Mass Sustainable Communities and Campuses Conference, for a hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-two cents to Gatehouse Media for legal ad, for Sixteen Country Way, and for five thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents to Horace Lee Witten for peer review inspections of seaside and situants.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Liaison reports. Do we have any?
Well, we've all been tied up with town meetings.
Oh, my goodness. Thank goodness that is over.
So, no. I don't have any. Shari, do you know who our liaison to the advisory board is?
I don't believe that we have one.
Well.
They asked just the other night, and we couldn't answer them.
So, to where?
To the advisory.
Oh, advisory board, yeah.
But don't they meet on Thursday nights?
But not all year.
And I don't know if, like, they're alternate with us sometimes, probably. I don't know.
I know zoning board of appeals, the next time is meeting the same night we're meeting.
That happens pretty frequently.
Yeah. That's not a good thing.
It's because of April vacation, April school vacation.
All right.
Well, I know who our liaison is for the advisory board, and he's never here, so I think that we need to make an attempt to get to advisory after what happened.
Well, we can put it on, we can add it to the list when we do, after the election, when we do liaisons. We can, we'll add that to the list, and we'll just give us liaison to the advisory.
Okay. We are moving right along here. Planning development report. Karen?
Yes, we are quite busy. We have, Drew Company is going to be filing revised plans next week for their special permit and traffic response, so we won't be ready for the meeting on the twenty-fifth, so that's gonna get an immediate continuance to May ninth. We've been working through the design review committee, and we've gotten a lot of, we've got a lot of the design issues resolved, because you asked them to look at massing and proportion, and they have come up with some solutions and some stuff so that the massing and proportion looks good. We will be having, we'll have a letter for you from the design review committee prior to the meeting on May ninth. So, that's moving along. We have a couple, we have a couple of accessory dwellings in the pipeline. As you'll find out tonight, the church stormwater permit is continued as well. We expect revised drawings. They had a little, the DEP was called out to look at some potential wetland issues, and that's why things, they're just not ready at this point in time, but they did ask for the twenty-seventh. Toll Brothers submitted some revised information today. They, they've done some relooking around at the pool and the clubhouse, and they're enhancing the planting in the whole pool clubhouse area, gaining four parking spots. I would be giving it to Horace Lee Witten tomorrow for review to verify that it's no real impact to the stormwater. And they've, they're changing some of the entrances, too. We're getting rid of the lighthouse things. The guardhouse is something much more low-key now, so it's being just scaled down to something that, it looks much more attractive. So, I think that'll all be insignificant change. They are working on a report and a timeline, because they anticipate coming to the planning board plus or minus May ninth for a discussion about proceeding into phase two. So, we've asked, we've met informally with them once. We've asked them to look at a number of issues about going into phase two.
Are they at far along in phase one?
There remains to be seen that. Most of, they're, they've got, they've got some areas of binder down for the main road. They're working on the base, some of the basins are gonna be permanently seeded very soon. They're, they put an extra sand layer in the bottom so that they can scrape off some of the, that material, and it won't impact the material below that. They are testing of a lot of the utilities. They plan on hopefully getting new, April fifteenth opens road opening permits again, so they hope to be able to do a lot of the, finish the final connections into the road. They hope to be starting planting on some areas in the next few weeks, particularly the berm in the, over by one nineteen Hathaway. So.
I thought they weren't going into phase two until they had, not only built out the infrastructure, but built most of the.
Well, so we asked them to consider a whole lot of stuff. Right now, there's over, units eighty-six to a hundred have been issued building permits. Those are the back ones on Thelma, off of, back drive off of Thelma off of Tilden. All those have, all those have building permits, and the model units have building permits. All the water is now being stored onsite, very slowly released into the system. They, they claim they're moving quite rapidly, but we've kinda asked them to really, we wanna, we wanna see your outline. We wanna, we want you, you know, to really show what you have done, because I believe under the order conditions, the drainage has to be proven to be functional before they can go into phase two. They will be starting on some wetland replication areas in the near future as well, and they will be doing their part of conservation permit, but they'll be doing their turtle, turtle sweep stuff end of May, early June. All the remediate, the remediation is complete. We don't have the final report. We have, they have a big water truck, very big water truck onsite now, so they, they got the message on the dust control, and they, we, we asked them very nicely, and they have agreed to it, not to use Codworth Road, and we're still having some issues with that, but it wasn't.
Codworth?
Codworth.
They were cutting over Codworth?
They were cutting over Codworth.
You've got to be kidding.
And so, we, it's not on your list of roads, but we kinda said, please, please, please. They agreed, they agreed, and they're just having a few, you know, stragglers still using that road.
So, they won't have to go through the light?
Yeah.
Got to be kidding.
No. We, we got a lot of calls about that.
I can fully understand why.
So, that, we've got, that is, that's going pretty well right now.
Was there supposed to be, or is there, like, air monitoring or noise monitoring stations installed?
They had air monitoring for the remediation. They absolutely had that. Noise monitoring, no, they didn't do, they did not do a background noise study, and I keep reminding them very nicely that if we get any complaints of noise, we're shutting you down. So, they are fully aware of that. We told them.
So far, so good. Nobody's complained about it.
Nobody's complained about noise. They, I mean, we tell them if, we get a lot of complaints about trucks and speeding, and there's a perception with a large eighteen-wheeler that it might be going faster than it is, but we don't issue tickets. It's the police department who issues speeding tickets, so the police are on top of it. We, they, we asked them to expedite the pedestrian actuated light and the, the other lighting, lights, and they are working to try to expedite that, because we told them the population does expand in the summertime, and that is a very busy area. They have put no parking signs up along Hathaway Road, because that was an issue as well. So, it's, it's looking a little better than it did in the beginning.
Well, that's good.
Yes.
They still got a long way to go.
We still have a long way to go, but we are trying to keep, we are trying to keep on them, and they are, they are trying to be responsive, is what they tell us, that they get tired of our phone calls, too. So, it is proceeding. We had, got four preliminary plans in, and we also did get a continuance for those, so projecting we may hear them on May twenty-third. The senior center is looming in the background, too. You know, there, there's a town meeting on a, on May thirteenth for that. Having an informal meeting with them this week to discuss maybe some of the site issues. They're trying to get ahead of that, and they would like to go to the design review committee prior to filing, and I have said that that will be, that will be acceptable. I haven't actually arranged a meeting yet, but it's going to be probably early May.
I'm kind of guessing that at this point, there's no chance of informally discussing this project before it goes to the April town meeting, or, sorry, the May town meeting?
Which project?
The senior center.
Yes. Oh, not with the planning board. I don't believe their intention is to file with the planning board before then, but we are having informal meeting with them during, during the day to try to resolve some of the issues.
Right. I meant more just like conceptually, since it's gonna be a large capital project with town building and everything, but yes, that's.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of expect that with guys like Drew Company. I don't know why we couldn't expect that.
Well, I mean, do you want them, do you want them to try to come into the planning board before? I mean, if, if, if the board wants it, I will see if I can arrange it.
Is there time on the ninth, which seems to be packed?
The ninth is pretty packed, because we have Drew, we are, we have a, we're sending out legal notices next week for an accessory dwelling. We have potentially Toll Brothers and potentially well seventeen A.
How about the twenty-fifth?
We could potentially have room on that night.
Okay.
Do you mean April twenty-fifth?
Yes.
I, I can ask them.
Okay.
I'll ask tomorrow.
Very good. Anything else, Karen?
That's pretty much it.
Just one thing, old business, whatever. Blanchard Farm was accepted as a public, a public way, and one of the questions, and it came up at the selectmen's meeting, and then again, it came up on Monday night, whatever night, about when we put in a subdivision, and it goes, and the sidewalk at Blanchard Farm goes to Curtis, but there's no crosswalk to the opposite side of the street where there is sidewalk. So, in the future, could we look to the possibility of adding something to our subdivisions that will make sure that they're handicapped accessible? Access, crosswalks? Is that our purview?
It's, it's in your purview. I vaguely recollect that it was discussed at the public hearing, or maybe afterwards, and it was an issue that was felt couldn't be addressed at that time, because of, there was, the sidewalk is across the street on Curtis, and it would've taken a lot of linear feat of sidewalk replacement to make, to make this happen, because the curb is a similar curb as in front of Curtis Estates. It's not a, the six-inch reveal really isn't there. But we will, we can add it to all our.
Okay. Great.
Projects.
Anybody else have anything to ask of Carol? Steve?
Yeah, I'll say.
You have said?
Yeah.
All right, we, we do have a request for continuance on the church. Is, do we need to wait till eight fifteen to do that?
It was a public hearing.
Okay. All right. Everything else is public hearing?
Everything else was a public hearing. So, we are, I can let you know that we are, Shari and I, mostly Shari's been very busy getting all the stuff ready for the submission to the AG's office tomorrow, so hopefully the bylaw stuff will get sent, will get sent out through the town clerk tomorrow.
Okay.
And we do have one of the earlier town meetings, so hopefully, you know, in the past, some of the bylaws have been acted upon in a really reasonable amount of time, but the AG has ninety days in which to respond.
All right, well, we have twelve minutes to our next public hearing. I move that we take a ten-minute break.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing, stormwater permit for five sixty-eight First Parish Road, Lot Two. Mr. Morris?
Good evening. For the record, Greg Morris, registered engineer, Morris Engineering. As was just read into the record, this is a continued hearing for a stormwater permit associated with a new single-family home at five sixty-eight First Parish Road. At the last meeting, I presented the project to the board. There were a couple of outstanding items that you asked me to address, which we have in our revised plan that was submitted to the board. As you heard at the last meeting from your consultant, the calculations that we had prepared do comply with the requirements of the stormwater management bylaw, reducing the rates in volumes of runoff from this site post-development. But in response to your comments, Ina Butter's comments, we did make the revisions that were required. The revisions included, we added additional spot grades along the edge of the road, and we revised the driveway entrance so that coming off of the road, we actually have a negative driveway slope, just to ensure that runoff from the driveway isn't going onto the street surface. It is directed toward our depression at the front of the site. We changed the details with respect to the grass depression in the front, so that the bottom of it, rather than having a mulch filter in the bottom, we changed it to a pea-stone surface to prevent mulch from floating and overtopping in that basin. We added additional erosion control devices on the upgradient side of the work to delineate the limit of clearing essentially as you come up the right-hand side of the driveway. We added a silt fence through that section. Our second stormwater basin here, there was concern about the shallow depth of that. That was about a five-inch-deep basin. We increased the top of the berms on that, so that we have it as a ten-inch-deep basin now. Gives a little bit more room for grading accuracy to ensure that you get the volume required out of it. So, that basin there provides now twice as much storage as it used to. We also increased the horizontal surface area of the lower basin down here, so that it is ninety percent bigger than our previous design as well. You asked for a detail regarding the drainage swell that we have. If you recall, the topography of the site is such that, from the top of the page, the water is generally flowing toward the bottom, kind of diagonally across this. Our limit of work is depicted very nicely by a stone wall that runs right here, even though our property line is significantly on the other side of that stone wall. But along the face of that stone wall on our side, we do have a swell depicted. We add some additional spot shots in that swell, and we also added a cross-section of the swell depicting four-to-one side embankments in a two-foot-wide width along the line. I turn it over to you. We've addressed your comments, and as you heard at the last meeting, we had addressed CEI's comments at that point.
Karen?
Yeah, Greg has highlighted most of the changes made. There's one additional change that I had asked them to look at, and that was on the, on the driveway above the large basin. They've actually changed the grading there so that it, you don't go from ten percent to six percent to less than one percent. It's, it's a little bit more grade there, and they still have the two percent cross slope, so it makes sure that you don't get a big flat area by the basin. And all the other spot grades that Greg indicated have been put on the plan, and CEI is happy with those spot grades, and CEI also, we have put in some conditions about verification of spot grades in the field during construction, so that the spot grades will be obtained. I've also put in some conditions relating to the cross slope for verification, and a couple times subgrade and after, after paving, to make sure the water is indeed going, as the design engineer has indicated it will.
All right, comments from the board? Steve?
No, I think these are all good changes. Appreciate you taking the time and the effort to do this, particularly increasing the size of the swell and changing the dynamic down here, so I think I'm good with it. I think it's also good that we have a more definite depth to this larger swell over here, too.
How do we time the release of the large swell? What's that? How do you time the release of the water from the large swell?
I mean, it all flows into that depression, and there's just a, a grass overflow, that once that depression fills up, it would overflow and overtop from that upper basin, and then it runs down a swell along the edge of the driveway to the lower basin. So, it's, it's over a grass weir.
Okay. I'm good. I think it was good. Ben?
One, one, I have a couple of comments. One is regarding the shallow grass depression near the road. This is more just my opinion, but I'm just, I guess I'm a little disappointed that we didn't take the road and do more of like a bio-infiltration system. There were some, some plants. I think aesthetically, that would've looked nicer, and also maybe would've provided a bit of habitat replication for what's gonna be kind of lost in the clearing for this project. But this is not a design critique, and I understand that you are meeting the requirements of the stormwater bylaw. The other comment is regarding the seed mix. I had a chance to review the New England Restoration Seed, Grass Seed Mix that you provided. I'm actually familiar with seed mixes by New England Wetland Plants, the proposed provider. That seed mix, just to clarify, is not really meant to be like a mowed turf grass mix. It's made to stabilize sites for kind of like restoration projects, so in that, in the stabilization process of that mix, it's designed with an annual ride grass, and that's to serve as a cover crop in the first growing season to kind of keep the soil down and allow the more clump-forming grasses, like your switchgrass, little blusen, and indium grass endings in there, too, to kind of get established and grow out over time. So, this is a mix that's supposed to kind of turn into more of like a grassland kind of meadow space, and eventually, after like a two- or three-year cycle of management, which we could talk more about, but then it's gonna be only an annual mowing, probably in the late winter, early spring, but I just wanted to kind of point that out.
Yeah, I think that was the intent in the area there, that, because we're specifying that mix only in one area, which is in this depression area.
Right.
Yeah, so that's not meant to be turf grass lawn.
Okay. I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to kind of clarify that, because I wasn't, I guess I didn't have a chance to like really review the O and M plan for the stormwater plan, but, so I didn't know if it said like to mow that basin or whatever, but it should be kind of, and New England Wetland Plants can provide you guys guidance on, on how that seed mix can be managed, but just wanted to kind of point that out.
Karen? So, how do we make sure that that happens? That they don't mow it? Can you enforce that?
No, I mean, not really. It's not part, it's not part of the stormwater. Like, if they want it to be turf grass and the, and the stormwater system still works, then that's okay, you know, but I just.
Yeah, you just, you don't want to, you don't want to fill it in, right? You don't want that kind of thing happening, right? Because it still needs to function for the stormwater management.
And that's conditioned?
Yeah.
So, we could possibly condition, maintenance shall be per the supplied O and M?
Right.
Yeah.
We can, I'm, there's a perfect, I can tag that on the end of condition eleven when we get there.
All right, I'll open it up to the public. Any more, any comments?
David Westman, five eighty-four First Parish, I'm right in front of the basin there. I don't think you have to worry about mowing in there, because it's, I would walk that area today, just this afternoon, and I've got pictures here, stuck a stick in the ground. Groundwater is four inches below the surface, and according to the meteorological report, we got four tenths of an inch of rain the other day. So, I can't take a storm and fill that up. But I was talking with Greg, and he was saying that it's above the ground level now, and then it's gonna be ten inches further up. But I'm just saying, that's good, and it'll, it will contain water, it will contain it for quite a while. Won't be seventy-two hours, I guarantee that, because right now, with the little bit of rain we had, the water table is four inches below the surface.
And there's another inch coming in on Monday. Keep going.
Do we have a groundwater measurement here somewhere?
We did the two test pits.
Yeah, they did test pits.
Location.
Oh, it's up here.
This is allocation.
One sixteen, one seventeen.
One mile.
One eighteen.
Groundwater.
This is one thirteen.
Thirty, thirty-two inches in the two test pits that were done.
Two test pits were dug in the big, in the big basin, and for the infiltration chambers from the roof.
Am I reading this right? The high groundwater level, is that elevation, is it one eighteen? Or is it one oh nine?
So, on, on sites like this, where you have glacial till soil, the groundwater typically sits on top of the third layer of soil down below the ground surface. Typically, you have about a foot of topsoil. You have a foot or so of subsoil, and then the third layer down, the groundwater is sitting on top of that. So, the elevation of groundwater on the side of a hill like this would vary in elevations that should come down the hill. The two test pits that were done, test pits A and B, had groundwater at thirty, thirty-two inches. Those logs are right here, which is consistent with the other test pits that have been done on the, on the site. Groundwater, for elevation purposes, is at elevation of one ten point five in this vicinity. The bottom of that, is that?
This is the test pit.
B.
That he did?
Right here. Right here.
Put that stick down almost three feet without any pressure. It's so wet and soggy there. But where my hand is, there's, and that's the water level. In that test pit, it was not 30 inches today, so, yeah.
It's not uncommon when you dig a test pit in soil like this and you backfill it, and it's become a disturbed area, that it's going to collect water, and you're going to note water table, you know, soon after doing that.
Right, now you're going to disturb all this area, and.
Correct, there will be.
All right, through the chair, please. All right, they're going to disturb it all, but you're going to make sure, to the best of your ability, to keep your water on that site.
Correct. That's the purpose of the berm in the swale. And when it's all final stabilized and compacted back the way it should be, and not just a temporary disturbance test pit, it should comply with the requirements of a three-foot groundwater separation.
And you'll put up enough silt socks and what have you to ensure that, once you disturb up there?
Correct. There's a erosion control device along that entire down gradient limit of work, and that limit of work is significantly onto the subject property.
Anyone else? All right.
So, I just, I'm just trying to follow your soil test data. The bottom table is one test pit. What's the top table?
Sure, so that, so we, Morse Engineering conducted four test pits, which are these four soil logs at the bottom of the site.
Yeah.
This top soil test pit data, these were four test pits that were done by another engineering company, Ross Engineering.
In the same place?
No, elsewhere on the site. These, the four here that Ross did were up a little bit closer to the house, in the vicinity of the proposed septic system. The soils were similar, and again, as I would expect, the groundwater was just above that sea horizon elevation.
So, that's why the groundwater level's higher up there?
Correct.
That's an elevation, I see, okay.
All right. Have you all set with this, Steve?
Yeah. I'm just trying to follow what we did do.
Do we have a motion?
Stormwater permit plan dated 3/15/19 with revisions through 4/10/19, and stormwater permit application and report dated 2/14/19 with revisions through 4/4/19 are approved with the conditions noted below. One, construction shall comply with the stormwater permit plan dated 3/15/19 with revisions through 4/10/19, and stormwater application dated 2/14/19 with revisions through 4/4/19 by Jeffrey M. Hassett, P.E., and Gregory J. Morse of Morse Engineering Company Incorporated, except as they may be modified to conform to the conditions below. Any or all owners of the property or site contractors for grading, site work, and installation of utilities, foundations, and/or driveways shall be advised of this approval in these conditions. A copy of the approved plan shall be kept on the site at all times during construction. Two, any or all owners of the property or site contractors for grading, installation of utilities, installation of the foundations, driveways, or site work shall be advised of this approval in these conditions. Three, any plan changes or changes from the proposed materials shall be submitted to the planning office to determine if the changes are insignificant or require a permit modification approved by the town planner or the planning board. The stormwater management system, including grass depressions, grading, dwelling, and site amenity locations, shall not be changed or expanded without the prior written approval of the issuing authority. Expansion includes additional pavement areas. Failure to obtain written approval is a violation of the Town and City General Bylaw and subject to fines. Four, copies of this approval and the approved stormwater permit plan shall be provided to subsequent owners, who shall be advised of the need for periodic maintenance of the stormwater system and the need to retain the grading of the water as approved. Prior to the transfer of the property, the owner shall provide to the subsequent owner and the planning office an inspection report certified by a professional engineer showing compliance with the operation and maintenance plan. The planning office must receive written notification within 48 hours of any change in the ownership of the property occurring during construction. Five, when the stormwater permit requires approval permitting or licensing from any local, state, or federal agency, such permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the stormwater permit. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to commencement of construction. Five, the NPDES permit shall be provided to the planning office 48 hours prior to any site work. Stormwater pollution prevention plan of swift inspection reports shall be provided to the planning office after every half-inch rain event. Failure to comply with the NPDES permit is a violation of the stormwater permit. Seven, the subsurface infiltration system shall be installed to have the bottom elevation a minimum of three feet above seasonal high groundwater elevations. Stormwater during construction as well as after construction is not allowed to increase in rate or volume to adjacent properties. A certification shall be provided by the design engineer to the building commissioner and town planner that the artificial recharge system will not result in degradation of water quality. Eight, no clearing beyond the limit of work, limit of clearing as shown on the plan is allowed. The limit of clearing shall be staked in the field prior to construction commencing and shall be maintained throughout the construction phase. Nine, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 a.m. on weekdays and 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays and shall cease no later than 7:00 p.m. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal or federal holidays. Construction work includes any operation of machinery and idling of vehicles. No truck idling on the site or on adjacent streets is allowed. Ten, no temporary or permanent slope shall exceed 25%. Verification of the driveway cross pitch of 2% is required prior to and after paving the driveway. This verification shall be done in cooperation with the desired engineer, who, sorry, who shall provide written documentation to the town planner that the cross pitch is present on the subgrade and proposed matuminous concrete driveway after paving. Eleven, grass depressions or swales must be retained and maintained as designed as they are components of the stormwater management system. New England Erosion Control Restoration Mix for Dry Sites is the specified seeds for the grass depressions, and shall not be modified unless approved by the town planner.
Would you like to take a break? Sure. Beth?
Right.
You're working up at 12.
Twelve, a stabilized construction entrance shall be installed prior to any work on the site and shall be maintained throughout construction. Thirteen, prior to any land disturbance, erosion control shall be installed and inspected by the town planner or approved agent. At this time, the site shall also be staked to show the house and drainage improvements. All stockpiles shall be surrounded by an erosion control barrier. Additional erosion controls such as silt fence, silt sock, and/or hay bales placed prior to a precipitation event may be needed to prevent sediment from reaching the road or adjacent properties during construction. All erosion controls shall be installed per the plan and shall be maintained in good work and condition throughout construction. Additional silt fence shall be provided along the front edge of the property on either side of the stabilized construction entrance. Fourteen, the town planner shall be notified when installation of the construction entrance and erosion control are complete. If any permit inspection is being requested, this notification shall occur 48 hours in advance of an inspection. Fifteen, the, or no on-street parking or loading or unloading of construction equipment or vehicles shall be permitted during construction unless a police detail is provided, if warranted as determined by the police department. Noise mitigation and proper dust control shall be used. Sixteen, a pre-construction conference will be required on-site to verify the contractor is aware of the stormwater permit conditions and required inspections. Recording of the permit must occur prior to the pre-construction conference with proof of recording furnished to the planning office. Seventeen, construction inspections will be provided as follows. A, all inspections for the town shall be performed by the town planner or a designated representative of the planning department or planning board by the record design engineer. All inspections shall be documented with written reports that describe compliance with the approved plan and supporting application documents and construction specifications. Any variations shall be noted. B, the town planner and record designer engineer must be notified 48 hours prior to: One, installation of construction entrance and erosion control and staking of corners of the dwelling, limit of work, driveway, and the drainage improvements. Two, excavation of infiltration area prior to filling. Three, installation of stone below infiltration chambers. Four, installation of infiltration chambers and connection of downsputs to chambers. Five, rough grading of the site, including swales in driveway to verify grades are as designed, including cross pitch of the driveway. Six, the outlet elevation of the upper depressed area and its flows into the swale that runs along the lower section of the driveway shall be confirmed in the field at the subgrade level and elevation submitted to the town planner and design engineer for verification. Seven, finished grading of all infiltration area, including grass depressions and the outlet elevation of the upper depressed area and its flow into the swale that runs along the lower section of the driveway with elevation submitted to the town planner and design engineer for verification. Eight, inspection of site amenities, including driveway, walk, and patio and lawn vencited areas. Nine, inspection of final completion of site work, including cleanup, to determine compliance with the conditions prior to issuing a certificate of completion. Work shall be subject to removal if necessary, inspections are not requested. If the property is sold prior to completion of the work, the planning board reserves the right to inform the buyer that the stormwater management system is incomplete. Spot grades shall be performed during rough grading and finished grading to ensure any swales will drain and no standing wire will be present. Eighteen, the applicant or his contractor will provide a construction and plan completion guarantee of $5,000 prior to issuance of a building permit to guarantee that the town will be notified when site inspections are required. The as-built plan will be provided, and construction will be completed in accordance with the approved plan. A certificate of completion must be issued prior to return of the construction and plan completion guarantee. Nineteen, the stormwater permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds. Failure to record the stormwater permit is a violation of the permit and subject to fines included in the Town of City General Bylaws. Twenty, the property owner shall be responsible for the proper maintenance and operation of the stormwater control system. A best management practices, inspection schedule, and maintenance checklist is attached to the shelf, serve as a guide for proper maintenance of the system. Twenty-one, construction of the proposed stormwater management system, site utilities, site amenities, and grading shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer, who shall certify to the planning board that the site was constructed according to the approved plans. The certification shall be accompanied by an as-built plan stamped by a registered surveyor and the registered professional engineer who designed the system, and shall be submitted to the planning board, or planning office, excuse me, within 10 days of completion of the work. This plan shall include the construction conditions of the stormwater management system, including top and bottom elevations and inverts, spot grades as necessary, grading, house site amenities, and driveway. All tie-ins for roof gutters to drivels must be shown with inverts and pipes provided. Prior to application for a certificate of occupancy, an interim as-built must be submitted to the planning office for verification that the stormwater management system is in compliance with the design. The final as-built plan must be submitted prior to obtaining a certificate of completion for the stormwater permit, and all work must be found in compliance with the approved permit. All grading and landscaping must be complete prior to the final as-built supplemental. Twenty-two, underground irrigation systems are prohibited from connecting to the town's water distribution system or in any manner using municipal water. All irrigation systems installed must be supplied by onsite sources at the expense of the property owner. Violations of this policy shall result in a fine to the property owner with an equal fine levied on the installer of the system.
Any changes or corrections?
Yeah, there's one. Now, Condition 2 is repetitive. It's already in Condition 1.
All right.
We went by the section about the seed.
11.
Yeah. Well, actually, let me just jump back to four. It said the planning office must resee writ notification within 48 hours of change in ownership. Does it matter whether you get it before or after the change in ownership? Were you trying to get it before?
We're just trying to get notified of change in ownership. So, in the past, it's been a problem that some of these are sold, and thus, we never get the reports. We never get the inspections. We never get anything, so we're just.
So, in order to do that, you'd want it before the change in ownership, then?
Yeah, probably, but we'll take any notification.
I would change within to before. That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Or maybe at least 48 hours prior.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, that sounds better.
Okay.
Okay, you want to go back to the grass?
What was it, 11?
11.
What would you want to say in there?
I think you need to change, to mix for the large grass depression, and shall not be modified unless approved by the town planner. Maintenance must be per the approved operation and maintenance plan, because he said that the, only the large grass depression is the seed mix.
So, I'm sorry, tell me how you want to rewrite that, then?
New England Erosion Control Restoration Mix for Dry Sites is specified seed mix for the large grass depression.
Okay. Yeah.
Maintenance must be per the approved operation and maintenance plan.
So, we're adding that sentence?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then there was one that, on number 20, you said a checklist is attached.
Yeah, we'll, we'll attach, we'll take the O&M plan and attach it to the permit.
Okay.
Yep, and they, this one has the checklist right in the O&M plan, so we, we will attach that to the permit.
So, can we say a best management practice? I feel like we haven't really, did we address the management plan itself, then? Or is this just the checklist to the plan? Did I miss it?
We can say, and plan, I mean, best management, inspection schedule, and maintenance checklist and plan is attached and shall serve as guide for proper maintenance.
Yeah.
All right.
That's all I had.
Anybody else? All right, I'll accept a second as.
Greg had.
May I ask just for clarification on number 10? No temporary or permanent slope shall exceed 25%. We had accepting stockpiles, if there's a pile of material at the site that gets dumped off, temporary stockpile. Just wanted to verify that.
Accept stockpiles surrounded by erosion control? It's a requirement of the Water Resource Protection District, so.
Yeah, I know, like, finished slopes aren't to exceed 25%.
Right.
But this site obviously requires fill. We have some dump trucks bringing in truckloads and dumping in front of the site, and they bring in 10 loads one day, and they're going to come right at the next day, and those piles are going to sit overnight.
Yeah.
And they will certainly exceed 25% slope if they're dumped onto the truck.
So, then maybe, I think it should say, accept stockpiles with proper erosion control, right? Because even if they're dumping it, we don't want it washing out into the street, right?
Yep.
All right.
Great, thank you.
A second has amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
And it is now 8:00. Our next couple of questions.
Wow, that was good.
Thank you.
We're actually, we're 15 minutes late. Public hearing is 7:45.
What?
Who are we? Huh?
7:45.
No, 7:45. 60 Country Way.
We are late. We didn't want to take the chance that, you know.
All right, got you.
15 minutes probably, except.
Thank you, Steve.
Do we need, for the record, Frank Colepoys?
Turn that mic, thank you.
Frank Colepoys, I'm an attorney licensed to practice law on the Commonwealth, and I'm here representing the applicant, Charles Fagan. With me this evening is also Ed Cullen, who is the engineer on this project, and we're here on the continued public hearing from our last meeting for the mixed-use special permit at 60 Country Way. As you may recall, at that last meeting, I would characterize it as the board was generally receptive and favorable to this project. However, there were some issues that needed to be addressed, which were addressed by Ed in conjunction with the planner, and I'm going to turn it right over to Ed, I guess, to address those, those changes and issues for the board. There were others, some other comments about specifications on the sewer pipe going out. That's addressed in the utility sheet as well. Trees, the request was to specify, that's called the size and type of trees. Again, we've done that. These are eight-inch pear trees here, and these will be maple trees up in front. Also, these bushes are to remain, the ones here. This is to provide a buffer between, this is existing and the ones that are made. Those are the majority of the comments that we received.
Are these two separate lots?
Correct. This line right here is the dividing point between them. The reason we combined this was for emergency access, so the emergency access deals, rather than try to go to any backup.
But you own the access to both lots?
I do.
Okay.
Karen?
I believe all the comments that were, all the issues have been resolved and the board could make a decision. You'll need to make some findings about the glazing and some other issues as we get into the decision.
Were any waivers asked for?
No, but we did write some waivers in here because the planning board is allowed to waive the front yard setback on, when you reuse an existing building for a mixed-use development, you are allowed to waive the setback. It's supposed to be maximum of 15 feet, but the existing Gothic Revival House is 16.8, and that's something that is certainly a benefit to the town.
All right, I'll open up comments from the board, Bill.
The building that, the Gothic Revival, it's not moving at all, right?
No, it's not. He's just, the existing attached garage to that is coming off, but other than that, it is not moving. It is staying there.
Ben?
I know you said the two, could you just tell me a little bit more about the trees? I know you said, like, pears and maples. Do you know the, like, what species or cultivars?
These are maples on the front.
Right.
It's tougher to see. We highlighted the new ones in, but if you look, there's trees all the way around here, so there's really no place else to put them. And here, these are the ones, you know, easy to grow.
Yeah, no, I'm more curious what the species, like, what the actual spec plant that you're planning to use was.
These three are actually on the property already.
Oh, those are existing trees?
Yeah, right here, and they're going to be moved.
Oh, okay, all right.
Rather than destroying them, they're just going to be rotated there.
Okay.
And they're eight-inch pear trees.
Okay, fair enough.
There's a series of five of them.
Yeah.
The other two are right here.
Transplanting three.
Again, those two are...
Instead of, you know, cut them down and move them over there.
Okay. That's fine.
Steve?
My only question really is with respect to, you know, it's nice to see the, sort of, the flow-through on the lots, but the question that comes to mind is what happens if ownership transfers? So, you have two separate ownerships of the lot there. You then have, without some kind of easement back and forth, it feels like you have this sort of potential to be, should we be looking at this lot in isolation to the other lot, I guess? And right now, you're sort of sharing, it looks like you're sharing some of this, for instance, well, I guess, the rubbish disposal. You know, you'll have access to it as long as you own both lots, right? But if you don't own both lots, then you won't have access to it.
Yeah, any issues like that could be addressed pre-closing, you know, appropriate easements to take care of those problems.
Maybe we should have that as a condition then.
We can add that as a condition. When we get there, we can have, we can add...
Yeah, I just don't want to get in, you know, find ourselves in the middle where we've sort of chopped it up without having thought about how you would deal with it afterwards.
I mean, the dumpster is the only actual shared item, so we could...
Sort of looks like the parking lot, the way it's striped and all that kind of stuff. It's sort of chopped right in the middle and...
One smaller space, that's all.
Yeah.
Just one.
And I'm assuming that all of this sort of conforms as an individual lot, Karen?
Yes.
As opposed to relying on anything on the other lot?
Yes.
Okay. I guess that is my only point.
The only other issue, if I may, to raise, in the proposed decision, the draft, there was 13 parking spaces that I think were, appear to be what would be the decision, and I believe there's 14 showing on the plan. Is one that's being eliminated. Correct me if I'm wrong on this.
You see, I've written that the planning board needs to decide that when they get to, when they get to that.
That's right.
And we can, we can get to, we can talk about that either now or then. I mean, it's up to the board. Do you want to, there's a space, maybe you could show them where the two spaces are?
These two.
There's, it could be, if the board interprets it, that one of the, the lower space is in the front yard setback, and you're not allowed to have parking in the front yard setback for a mixed-use special permit. So, I've kind of written that...
It's within the five foot, seven five foot.
It's within the front yard setback. So, it's within the setback, you know, 16.8 feet or going over to the garage. That whole thing in the front of that would be the front yard setback.
Yeah, this property right here.
From the, from the front of the garage to the property line is the front yard.
Oh, then you're saying this is...
Yes, yes.
That wouldn't be considered the side?
It would still be in the side yard setback anyway, right? At least one, the first lot?
Yeah, to the right of the garage, the first spot.
We assumed this was the front. This is the front edge.
I'm confused. Where are these two spaces?
They're, they're right there.
They're, they're parallel spaces, they're not permitted, so they're more than supposed to be.
Well, no, the two spaces, this says the two spaces start at the front of the garage and go backwards, go towards the back of the lot.
No, but...
I don't see there's any space in front of that.
No, there's, there's, look at, look at the plan. It shows they're parallel, they're parallel spaces, so one of them runs, a car width is 20, approximately 20 feet, so...
Twenty by 10 spaces.
Right, they're 20 by 10 spaces, and one run is most...
So, you would come in like this, there's one right here, and that, that would be behind it like there in nine, and then this is the actual road.
Oh, so there's only one dimension here then?
Correct. Both of the spaces on the same side.
So, this is another space right here. This is another space.
I'm concerned about that front space. I mean, we need that front space.
Right, so I'm, I left that as a, when we get to it, you guys can figure out what, if you want it there or if you don't want it there. There could be interpretation, as I discussed with the building commissioners, that a front yard setback is in front of a dwelling or a building. And so, I just, it's the board's decision.
Another thing I would add, it is the board's decision. Parking is key down here.
You are so right.
And, you know, I don't think it's detrimental in any manner to the area, to the site by putting it. If we can interpret it and it's the board to make that decision, we'd like to see it in there, obviously. It will help.
All right, we'll proceed then with filings with that.
Suggestive motion, I move the following parties of course based on information submitted by the applicant and the testimony given during the public hearing were approved by April 11, 2019. Charles Fagan filed an application for a mixed-use special permit in the Village Business Overlay District under Centred Zoning Bylaw Section 560 on February 22, 2019. This application included a project narrative, stormwater permit application, and drainage calculations, and plans by Merrill Engineers, Elance Reyes, entitled Site Plan Number 60 Country Way, Centred, Massachusetts. Sheets C1 dash dot one dash six, C6 dot one and C6 dot two. There are seven sheets. Date 2/15/19 with revisions through 3/25/19, architectural rendering of the new building and the floor plan. Two, the property that is the subject of this application is a 41,912 square foot upland parcel improved with an existing single-family home and a garage, a freestanding garage to the north, and a one-and-a-half-story workshop and gravel driveway. The property is shown on the Centred assessor's maps as parcel 53 dash four dash 11, and the property is in the business district, Village Business Overlay District and Water Resource Protection District, with a portion in Zone A, which will not be disturbed. Three, the lot or yard area required for the new building or use do not include any part of a lot that is required by any other building or used to comply with any requirements of this bylaw. The proposal meets the requirements of Section 560.4A. Four, the planning board waived review of the application under Section 750 by the Design Review Committee as the project was minor in nature. As required by the Centred Zoning Bylaw, Section 560.8, Design Review Standards, the planning board has considered the extent to which the applicant satisfies the Design Review Standards detailed below. A, roofs. Roofs are pitched to the center ridge. The slope with the proposed roof is six to 12 and does not meet the requirements of a minimum slope of eight to 12 required by Section 560.8A. However, the building is designed to look like a stable to the existing Gothic Revival House and will be below the roof of the adjacent microbrewery. The planning board waives this requirement. Dormers are not proposed. B, facade treatment. On the facade of the proposed building facing Country Way, a small window is proposed to the warehouse. The windows of the Gothic Revival House will remain unchanged. Glaze requirements of 50% on the ground floor are not verified to be met. C, front yard setbacks. The front yard setback to the existing residence situated on Country Way will be 16 foot eighteen, 15 feet is the maximum. The planning board may waive this requirement on corner lots for existing buildings which are converted to mixed use. As the residents will have an office, it is to be a mixed-use building, and the planning board waives the front yard setback. One parking space is proposed to be located in the front yard setback of the property. The planning board agrees or disagrees to waive this requirement. The proposal is considered to meet this requirement.
So, you guys need to decide if you want to agree or disagree to that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. D, sided rear yard setbacks. The side setback is proposed to be nine feet on the north side for the proposed warehouse. The rear setback for the proposed warehouse is 41.4 feet. The rear setback for the existing workshop is 20.4 feet, and the proposal is considered to meet this requirement. E, special setbacks, Centred Harbor, the requirement is not applicable. F, Green Bush Design Standards. The proposed warehouse is less than 120 feet long on its longer side, which does not face the street. This proposal is considered to meet this requirement. G, parking or landscaping. The driveway for the proposal will be 22 feet wide. Landscaping was incorporated on the plans. No invasive plants are proposed. Screening is proposed to budding the residents. The site is in the Water Resource Protection District. Stormwater is proposed to be treated by a subsurface recharge system. Impermeable surfaces are minimized. The proposal meets the requirements of Section 560.4B and the Design Review Sections of Section 560.8. Five, as the proposal contains less than eight housing units, no affordable units as defined in Section 560.7 are required or proposed. The proposal meets the requirements of Section 560.4C. Six, the requirement that 50% of the floor area be retail use is not applicable here as the property is not on Country Way in Green Bush. The proposal is considered to meet the requirements of Section 560.4D. Seven, according to Edward T. Cullen, P.E., the lot contains 41,912 square feet. The minimum lot area per dwelling unit is 16 units per 40,000 square feet. Only one residential unit is provided. 24,562 square feet or 58% of the site shall be maintained as open space. This exceeds the required 20%. Frontage is required to be an amount sufficient in the opinion of the planning board to provide adequate access in not less than 20 feet. Frontage of approximately 393.87 feet is provided on Country Way according to the site plan, Sheet C4.1, standby Edward T. Cullen, P.E. The proposal is considered to meet the requirements of Section 560.4E. Eight, the applicant is not seeking a bonus density. The requirements of Section 560.5 are not applicable. Nine, the proposal will contain 13 parking spaces, including 188 inaccessible space, and 10 spaces are required. This is two spaces per the residential dwelling. The applicant has provided parking, which meets the requirements of Section 560.6. Ten, as the proposal contains less than eight housing units, no affordable units as defined in Section 567, 560.7 are required or proposed. The requirements of Section 560.7 are not applicable. Eleven, the proposed stormwater management system has been reviewed by the town's consulting engineer, Matthew Lonsdale of CEI, whose comments indicate his concerns have been satisfactorily addressed if the stormwater management system is built as designed. Twelve, the review of the stormwater management system by the planning board's consulting engineer and their approval of this special permit eliminates the requirement for a separate stormwater permit under the Stormwater General Bylaw and its regulations for any work that conforms to the plans. Edward T. Cullen, P.E. has certified that the drainage system can be expected to result in post-development runoff characteristics, including peak flow, total volume of runoff, and water quality of runoff, to be equal to or less than the pre-development runoff characteristics. Based on these findings, the mixed-use special permit meets the requirements under the Village Business Overlay District, Section 560.
Changes, anything you want to add?
We have to go 4C if we're going to decide.
4C.
There's a couple of places. It seemed like five and 10 were duplicate, huh? Did I miss that?
Yes. So, we'll get rid of one of them.
Is it a different section or something?
Yeah, there's a section.
Are we, are there two different sections we're trying to comply with here, Karen?
Yes.
Okay.
Because this says 560.7.
560.7.
Then it says it meets the requirements of 560.4C.
Yeah.
And then this says 560.7.
Yeah, they have, 560.4C is affordable, 560.7 is affordable.
Is it redundant? No?
It just feels like it's redundant.
It's redundant.
It has to do with the parking space. No?
Well, it's not going to happen anyway, so...
It's not going to happen, it's, right, but there's two sections in here, which you talk about that.
Maybe you just want to strike one section, that's all?
Strike, strike 10.
Okay, we also...
Public input?
In a second. Public input?
Did I miss it?
No, not yet. I'm still trying to, we have to decide on...
4C.
4C, thank you. 4C, do we agree or disagree?
I'll tell you what I think, and it's really a function of kind of how this thing looks like it lays out, is that it feels to me like this is a drive-in space up by the garage, but to put two spaces in there makes it a much more difficult sort of transition in here, plus it'll put the car kind of right up on the street. And so, my inclination, which is what I thought we had before, and I just misunderstood how they drew this, was that the only space is the one that they had to mention there.
So, you agree?
That was, that's my opinion anyway. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I agree.
I agree. Karen?
What do we agree to, the single?
A single.
A single, you know, that's not in the frontage, right?
It's not in the front...
And so my inclination, which is what I thought we had before, and I just misunderstood how they drew this, was that the only space is the one that they had to mention there.
So you agree?
That was, that's my opinion, anyway. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I agree.
I agree. Okay.
What do we agree to, the single?
A single.
A single, you know, that's not in the frontage, right?
It's not in the front yard.
So you could pull in there, you could use it to back out and get out, right?
I'm not opposed to having both of them there.
Okay.
So, is this going to read, "The planning board agrees to waive this requirement"?
Well, it sounds like it's going to read, "We agree and disagree."
You have to take out one.
Take, Jerry.
Before you want to check out, Steve.
I'm of the same opinion. I think it would be better just to have one in there.
Just to have that.
That's, again, that's my opinion.
So we agree to waive the requirement?
No, disagree.
Parking spaces proposed?
The requirement, the requirement is no, the requirement is no parking spaces in the front yard setback, right?
Right, so we want, which one do, how do we want it to read then?
So your issue is not, whether it be waived or not, it's the question, is it really a usable parking space?
Yes.
Well, I think it's a little of both. I still feel like it's, like we've, for the brewery, we sort of have held to that convention, right? Their parking is not in their setback, in their front yard setback, right? And if that's kind of the convention, then we ought to be consistent up and down the road, if we can be. So that's, that's a piece of it, but, you know, more, just as importantly, I think it probably only functions well as a single space in there, with that being the driveway, and we don't want people backed up on the street.
Right.
Or people trying to get in and out of those spaces as well.
I agree, but it, so what they want is this one parking space is proposed to be located in the front yard setback of the property. The planning board.
All right, there's two spaces there.
And we only want one?
There are two spaces, one of them.
You want two?
Yeah, can I just make a, just one point?
Yes, go ahead.
I agree with the same, but if you look at four Union Street, which is, their parking's on Countryway, Old Countryway, they have two parking spots in front of the building. The next, so it's not, I don't think we're setting a precedent, but I think.
Are they side by side or?
Side by side.
Side, as opposed to tandem?
Correct.
They're side by side, okay.
Can I just ask this question because I can't figure out from the map? How far is that parking space coming in to the front yards?
You mean from there to there?
Yeah.
I believe it's over, I believe it's over the five feet required.
It's five feet. And it's not 15.
The question is not, maybe I'm misinterpreting, but the question is not this distance. The question is, you don't want it in front this way, is that what you're saying?
I'm pointing out to you that there's two spaces there. One of them is in the side yard, and one of them is in the front yard. So if you want both spaces, then you're gonna, you'll agree to, you'll agree that.
To waive it.
To waive it.
All right, we agree to waive.
But I mean, because there's two spaces, but one of them I'm saying is in the front yard, one of them is in the side yard.
Well, one of them's allowed to be in the side yard.
Right, exactly, so one of them is allowed to be in the sidewalk.
It's in the front, that's in the front yard setback, which is the one that I was saying.
Yes.
That I think, first of all, a difficult parking space, and then, second of all, since it's not, since we would have to waive it in order for it to be allowed.
Right.
It just feels like it's kind of the wrong place to put a parking spot, right there.
I think it'd be good to hear if it fits the requirements of.
Yeah, it's more than five feet back.
Like, it's, the.
No, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about two things, right? One is the entrance, right? And so that parking space right there feels to me like that's a really difficult parking space, people are trying to get in and out there, right?
To get in there?
Yeah, to get in, get into this driveway here, right?
It's going to be one-way.
Well, like I said, that's.
It shows a two-way.
It's going to be one-way.
It doesn't say.
It's going to be two-way.
It shows a two-way.
These ones, these are 18, whereas this is 20 feet, so you have the extra length and the extra width. They're specifically designed to this, so.
Is this a one-way or a two-way street?
I thought it was going to be.
Two-way.
Two.
Thought it was going to be one-way.
It's two-way. It shows that on the drawing is two-way.
I was under the impression it was going to be one-way all the way around.
We can revise the special permit, if you remember, on the brewery site to then provide for that, but for now, because it's separate, we have to do it as a two-way.
All right. I understand.
But ultimately.
You're going to come back for modification on the brewery, and we can deal with it then?
Right.
I'm, we're still, I can't tell where these two park, these two parking spaces are side by side?
No.
You're in tandem.
It's probably just going to utilize.
I think you want that up. Does that picture show it better? Because it is, it's difficult to see it on here, but I do, I see it.
And there are two spots here. This one is dimensioned, and this one is the equal dimension, you just didn't mention it, just as over here.
Yeah, see, that's what I thought, I thought this was the only space they were putting in there.
It's, it's all the gray, so it's, obviously, it's easier to see here, but since these are 10 by 20, they're actually designed so, like, you parallel park just on the side of the street. They're larger than the traditional nine-by-18s. They're specifically made that way and designed that way, so you can back in, like you said, and then turn on as well. So it would actually be easier than parallel parking on a street, because, you know, you only have one car behind you, and then you can just, you just back out and then pull it out.
Well, if this was one-way this way, then I would say that's better, right? But since it's two-way, and traffic's coming in here off of the street, if somebody's messing around in here, you know, that's, that's what would worry.
Yeah, the thing is, it's not a public way or anything here. It's a driveway, so there's not going to be a tremendous amount of traffic that you have to worry about when you parallel park and coming out of there.
It's not going to be anybody in there. All right, we're getting.
I thought you just said it was going to be part of the brewery and all of this thing.
It will, when they come back for a site plan modification.
Right, and then it'll be one-way, and that should alleviate.
And what site plan are you going to modify?
The brewery.
Are you going to modify your site plan?
No.
I don't get that. So do we leave this as a two-way street at this point?
Have to.
Okay, so this is the problem with having.
This is the problem with having the two of them, and I'm trying to make this legal and everything.
Yeah.
It's, the amount of traffic that is going to be using the warehouse is minimal, so it doesn't, in effect, it doesn't exactly matter if it's one-way ultimately, or two-way in the end. I, I think the timing is way different, and it's not going to make a difference, so it always stays two-way just for, um, for the warehouse.
You just said it's going to change to a one-way street for, if you get the site plan modification. So which way is it?
I think it should stay, it would be one-way.
Yeah.
Only from the brewery. The brewery now has an easy access.
Right.
Exit, okay? I think it should stay two-way here.
For now.
For now. I think in the future it'd stay two-way.
Probably.
Yeah.
Because.
How's that work?
It does.
If the brewery's one-way and you're two-way coming in the other?
If there's a sign, if you notice there's a sign, do not enter. But this is wide enough for two-way, so.
Can I actually just point something out logistically on the site plan before we, I just don't know if I'm losing my mind or if it's maybe an error.
I think I lost mine.
Are these, is this arrow supposed to?
The arrow.
Okay, thanks. Although, well, in the final version, what, this is an English. I know, I know. I just wanted to make sure. I was thinking about, like, those two parking spots and the flow of cars, and I was like, wait, that's going to be like a problem. All right.
I noticed it when you said that before.
Okay. But, so, so let's assume you're going to make this site plan modification with the brewery. You're still going to leave it a two-way street on this site?
Yes, sure.
All right.
So it's not a one-way street then?
No, it's two-way.
It's a two-way street.
Driveway, really. We keep calling it a street.
It's a driveway.
If what you're proposing to do is to make it a one-way circulating road for the, for the brewery, then it's going to be really strange to have it two ways. What would keep anybody from coming and going the other way?
They'd have to put a do not enter sign.
There is a do not, there is a do not enter sign.
So only the people who know can go in the do not enter sign?
No, no.
The question is working.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm missing it.
They won't have to go all the way around, they could just come in and park here.
But it'll say do not enter there.
No, at the back.
At the back.
Here.
You can't enter that way.
Well, or actually, you would be right there.
Okay.
It's the way the parking is.
So if you're going to.
It says propose one-way, do not.
So the, the people who are going to the brewery.
You'll have to go this way.
Can't.
But the people who are here can come in and go up.
All right.
And the people going here is going to be very, very low.
I mean, the parking space we're talking about is pretty much the same as the office on your, on your, on your storage unit.
Right.
You got, you got space there, but it's very seldom that somebody's in it.
Right.
Because they could, they drive down closer to where the storage units are, the storage unit is.
And all this over a parking space?
Yeah.
Well.
So. So technically, then, you need to change, I'd need to change number nine to say 14 parking spaces, including one ADA accessible space. And then, now we need to go back up to number six. The requirement that 50% of the floor area be retail use is not met here, as the property is on Countryway.
Right, I didn't, why did you say it's not?
So I, I'm sorry, I.
On Old Countryway.
It's, I used it from another decision, and I was very tired this week, yes.
Yeah, that's what surprised me.
All right. So which word are we crossing out?
Not.
We're not crossing out anything on the.
On six.
Now you're going back to C.
I thought we'd already moved on.
We moved, you agreed to that one. You're agreeing to the waiver.
Right.
So number six, you, so you, the 50% of the floor area is not met here, the proposal is not considered to meet this requirement.
As the property is on Countryway.
Right, so.
Or not.
Right, so you, I'm just highlighting that that's, that's how we want it.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
Should we also put that line in that the planning board agrees to waive this requirement?
Yes.
What else? Any public comment?
Are these, do these things ultimately get filed, these drawings?
Yes.
Okay, when you file them, you'll change.
Make the arrows. Okay, so is there a second on the findings of fact as amended?
Second.
All in favor of the findings of fact?
Aye.
Aye. Now we come to the conditions. And I think we'll have some, somebody else read them.
I move the planning board approve with the special permit with the following conditions. General requirements. One, all construction work shall be done in accordance with the plans submitted by Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors entitled Site Plan Number 60 Countryway, Cituit, Massachusetts, Sheets C1.1 through C6.1 and C6.2. Seven sheets dated 2/15/19 with revisions through 3/25/19, architectural rendering of the new building and floor plan. Two, where this mixed-use special permit requires approval permitting or licensing from any local, state, or federal agency, such required approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the town or Cituit planning boards, the planning board or the boards, approval of this mixed-use special permit. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to construction. Three, construction shall meet all requirements of the Cituit zoning bylaw. All conditions of approval shall be inscribed on the mixed-use special permit plan. Four, the applicant shall mean, shall meet, is that mean or meet?
Shall mean.
Shall mean, the current applicant and all its successors in interest of the applicant. This special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time requirement to pursue or await the determination of an appeal under General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 17. From the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause, or in the case of a special permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. The planning board may extend said period for good cause shown upon receiving a written request from the applicant prior to the expiration of said permit, which request shall provide a detailed description of the good cause necessitating an extension. Five, the total number of residential units on the site shall not exceed one. Six, the applicant shall obtain the endorsement of the planning board for the mixed-use special permit within 90 days of the expiration of the appeal period and this decision, and this decision becoming final. Utilities, parking, and traffic. Seven, maintenance and repair of the driveway, parking areas, stormwater management systems, snow removal, lighting, and landscaping shall be the responsible of the owner applicant for the operation and maintenance plan attached to this decision. Eight, no new underground irrigation systems shall be allowed to connect to the town's water distribution system or in any manner use municipal water in accordance with the policy made effective by the board's selectmen on October 8, 2014. All irrigation systems installed in accordance with the policy must be applied by onsite sources at the expense of the property owner. Nine, all parking will be constructed as shown on the plan. Ten, the building, parking, walkways, and paths and required signage shall meet all applicable requirements of the ADA and the Cituit Commission on Disabilities. Eleven, trash management shall be in the dumpster on the adjacent brewery site. If additional measures are needed for refuse disposal, they shall be submitted to the town planner to determine if acceptable or a permit modification is needed through the planning board. Twelve, all electrical, telephone, cable, and similar utilities shall be located underground. Thirteen, any lighting shall be attached to the buildings on the interior-facing side. Lighting shall be shielded so as not to spill onto adjacent properties. Fourteen, the applicant shall obtain the approval of the planning board through the town planner if minor changes from the plan and/or details are needed for lighting, signage, fencing, or landscaping required prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference. Fifteen, the final building plans stamped by a registered architect shall be provided to the planning department for review for consistency with the elevations and renderings described in Condition 1. If the plans appear inconsistent, approval by the planning board will be required. Sixteen, the development shall obtain all necessary approvals for the use of town sewer prior to scheduling a pre-construction conference. Installation of any sewer mains and pertinences shall be performed according to the specifications of the DPW. Any required upgrades, modifications, or connections shall be at the owner's expense. Copies shall be furnished to the planning board. A determination of the adequacy of the existing water service for the proposed use shall be provided to the DPW for their approval prior to scheduling a pre-conference, pre-construction conference. Installation of all water mains and pertinences shall be performed according to the specifications of the DPW Water Division. Any required upgrades, modifications, or connections shall be at the owner's expense. Prior to scheduling the pre-conference, pre-construction conference, the following notes shall be added to the plans. A, no finished slope shall be created that exceeds 25%. B, no vehicle washing is to occur on the site. C, units on the building, new building shall be numbered on the outside for identification, fire protection, and emergency responses. D, uses prohibited by the Cituit zoning bylaw, Section 520.6, or any use generating, treating, storing, or disposal of materials considered hazardous waste, except for a very small quantity, generators as defined by 310 CMR 3000, shall not be conducted in the commercial units. Storage of liquid hazardous materials or liquid petroleum products shall be prohibited unless stored. Storage is above ground level on an, in impervious surface and contain, and in containers or above ground tanks within a building or outdoors in covered containers are above ground tanks with a containment system designed and operated to hold 10% of the total possible storage capacity of all containers or 110% of the largest container's storage capacity, whichever is greater. C, excuse me, E, the long-term operation and maintenance plan slash pollution prevention plan shall be provided to all tenants and occupants of the property with applicable sections included as conditions of lease or rental agreements. Nineteen, prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference, the applicant shall provide to the planning board, A, copies of the recorded special permit and plans, B, a check to cover cover cost of inspections by the town's consulting engineer. These shall include at minimum inspections of subdivision rules and regulations, Section 9.0, for the driveway, parking areas, and stormwater management systems, and in addition, inspection of applicable items in the construction sequence and any curbing and water and sanitary sewage facilities as coordinated with the Situate DPW. The specific amount shall be provided by the planning department based on the consulting engineer's estimate, shall be subject to amendment from time to time, and shall be supplemented by the applicant as requested by the planning department. C, a construction schedule including approximate dates for installation of erosion control and any other site protection, stabilization, construction of the building, and all applicable items in subdivision rules and regulations, Section 9.0, and D, a type and amount of security satisfactory to the planning board to cover the satisfactory completion of features shown on the site plan, including parking, drainage, landscaping, walkways, lighting, signs, fences, and conditions imposed by the board, shall be provided by the applicant owner. The amount shall be based on the applicant owner's contractor's estimates of the cost of these items, reviewed by the town's consulting engineer, and shall be approved by the planning board prior to the pre-construction conference. Required to the start of construction. Twenty, all pre-construction conference shall be, a pre-construction conference shall be held with the applicant, their representatives, their engineer, the site contractors, the town planner, the planning board's consulting engineer, and other representatives of the town, as the board feels necessary. A list of all contractor contacts, including names and telephone numbers, shall be provided. Two. Let me finish this last sentence. Planning board and DPW, mother of God. At least one telephone contact shall be available 24 hours per day in the event of an emergency. You may start at 21.
Okay, 21. The property lines of the subject property shall be marked or flagged in field under the direction of the surveyor or, and notification given to the town planner and consulting engineer, a minimum of three business days prior to the start of the construction. 22, stabilized construction entrance and silt sock as shown on the plan sheet, three, C 3.1. Of the proposed mixed-use development plan must be installed prior to any earth disturbing activities on site, including but not limited to clearing and grubbing. Required during construction. Construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturday, and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whatever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal slash federal holidays. 24, all earth-moving disturbance operations shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures are in place and approved by the town planner or the town consulting engineer. Such control measures shall remain in place until the board's consulting engineer determines after consultation with the town planner that the danger of erosion or sedimentation no longer exists. 25, no parking or unloading on Countryway shall be permitted during construct, excuse me, shall be permitted during construction. 26, the board reserves the right to require the consulting engineer to visit the site weekly during times when required construction inspections are further than one week apart. 27, construction of the proposed driveway, parking, and site drainage systems shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer who shall certify in writing to the planning board at the completion of the project that the driveway, parking, and drainage systems were construction, constructed in accordance with improved plan. This certification shall be accompanied by as-built plans, showing all site utilities and grading, signed and stamped by a professional land surveyor and supervising professional engineer. The as-built shall be reviewed by the town, town's consulting engineer for compliance with the design. Required prior to issuance of occupancy permits. 28, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the planning board and building commissioner are satisfied that the driveway, parking areas, and installation of necessary utilities is in full compliance with the approved plans and the special permit. Administration. 29, all time periods referenced in this document for completion of conditions shall be told in case, in case of any appeals are taken. 30, the special permit shall run with the land and shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days of expiration of the appeal period, such extension of that time period granted by the planning board following approve, approval of this special permit. 31, the special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial reuse or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with the Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 1. All plan sheets of the mixed-use development special permit plan shall be recorded at the registry deed. All construction work shall be done in accordance with the plan.
Okay, any additions, corrections?
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned about number 11.
Okay, number 11.
Right. Uh, it says trash management shall be in the dumpster on the adjacent brewery, brewery site. I don't know that we can dictate that unless the owner owns both sites, right?
He does.
Right, but so, to the extent that is not the case, then they will have to come back and address trash disposal.
Right. It says, right? And additional measures are needed. Wouldn't that be covered in additional number, measures are needed?
Um...
Because that would be additional measures.
Well, I just, it feels to me like we can't sort of mandate that, right, in a special permit? If we're doing it for 60 Countryway, right?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the issue?
I'm just saying, I think we need another sentence in here that says, trash management shall be in the dumpster on the adjacent brewery site, to the extent that the applicant owns the adjacent site. And then you can say...
Or, or, you know, easements are granted in the case of...
Sure, or easements are granted, right? But we can't, for 60 Countryway, we can't compel some other site to take trash disposal.
Right.
Particularly, I mean, now, because it's owned by the same individual, you can agree with yourself to do that, right? But in this, in this agreement, it's only if the ownership is the same or somebody's granted an easement right to do that. Otherwise, trash disposal will have to be done onsite.
Yeah, that's right.
On 60 Countryway, all right? So I think that's what we need this to say.
To the extent that the applicant owns the adjacent site or easements are granted. Adding that to the end of the first sentence.
Yeah.
Okay. The one minor add-on to the end of the first one, except as may be modified to meet these conditions.
I'm sorry? Which one?
Number one, number one.
Oh, sorry, I jumped ahead. Number one, we're saying what?
Add, except as may be modified to meet these conditions.
Just a couple of typos. I think in 18D, about halfway through there, we've got a semicolon in a place that probably doesn't belong.
Okay.
I think you, I think you might just need to delete it.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
Yeah, and then on 19D, I think you can strike the word owner in both cases, right? Because by definition, the applicant is...
Okay.
You know, the current applicant or any successors, right?
Okay.
So, um, just editorial stuff. And then on, uh... 22, second line, there's an extra...
Yep.
...parenths there.
Mm-hmm.
And then on 26, um, I think, it should say, the board reserves the right to require the town's consulting engineer.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. That's all I had, anyway.
Thank you.
Well, if you're gonna read it, then I'm gonna follow up.
Are you all set?
All set.
Okay. I will accept a second as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you. You've been under the gun for the last few weeks, and especially with the planning and the town meeting.
Oh. You have no idea.
Karen and Cherry.
That's what we live for.
Okay, um, since we are now 35 minutes late.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Quick question.
What?
And a question regarding the light for the country club, or the club. When's that gonna be put in?
It's operational.
Okay.
It's working now.
Okay, so the installation is finalized?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all set.
I was asked, I just wanted to follow up.
Yeah, no, last Friday, when I...
I saw it.
Yeah. Should be a big, big help.
What is it?
Just a crosswalk, it's a country club.
Oh.
Yep.
If you didn't live here, you wouldn't know that was coming up.
No.
People fly down.
We have a golfers cross the panel.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I've been in those carts before.
I always, I know there's a golfers, because, you know, my husband's almost out there.
Accidents over you.
Yep, yep. We have a continued public hearing, stormwater permit for 27-foot road continuance requested. Yeah, you're on.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the stormwater permit for 27-foot road until April 25, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the select meeting room at Town Hall, 600 CJ Cushing Highway, and continue to try to filing a decision with the town court until May 10, 2019.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done.
I second Bill's motion.
All right. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Can I second being...
Good job on the conditions.
Can you what?
Thanks.